I'm going to ask, we have two scouts visiting us, two Boy Scouts, Caleb Blaylock and Riley Jackson from Troop 213, if you would come forward. And with that, I will open the meeting. And they're going to lead us in the pledge tonight.
Fantastic.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Welcome to the March 19th Pulse Falls City Council meeting. And Caleb and Riley are here as a requirement to attend a public meeting. So I thought, hey, we've got free labor, let's put them to work. So thank you, gentlemen, for participating. We do have a couple of public hearings tonight, so if anyone wishes to testify, there are forms on the podium in the back. And if you want to fill them out and bring them up to Shannon, our clerk, we will let you speak. Clerk will note that all council members are present, with the exception of Councilor Anthony, who was excused tonight. And with that, I'm going to step down. And I'm going to ask Gray Goodwin to join me up front. Once again, we have the pleasure of recognizing the Eagle Scout. We've had a significant number of Eagle Scouts in Pulse Falls, which we love to see. So Gray Goodwin, Troop 932. Gray collaborated with urban forestry staff in a project in the city's community forest. He planned, directed, and assisted a team of volunteers to help the city install directional trail markers on six miles of natural surface trails. Because the community forest is made up of multiple parcels, a cohesive trail system needed to be developed. One of the final and vital steps of improving this trail system involved installing physical trail markers at regular intervals along the trails themselves. The markers are used in conjunction with the corresponding trail map to assist visitors. Gray and his team spent close to 150 hours in the forest, hauling materials and tools in their arms and on their backs to designated trail marker installation sites. Each trail marker was installed by hand, and most markers were installed on trees at the top of a ladder. The trees weren't on top of the ladder, you were on top of the ladder, just wanted to make sure. Some were installed by manually driving posts into the ground. All of the work was physically demanding and at times also mentally challenging. The city of Pulse Falls and the Urban Forestry Division are very grateful for the effort that Gray and his team donated to the community with this project, which will continue to serve the community for years to come. So Gray, it is my honor and pleasure to present you with a certificate and a gift card in recognition of your achievement. Good job. Thank you so much. My wife and I just went hiking in there last weekend, and I was like, whoever did these signs did a great job, so I appreciate that.
I did the same thing, thank you so much for that.
I didn't hike it, but thank you.
Kind of got lost, I was like, oh, follow the sign, there we go. Always a pleasure to recognize successful young people in our community, so thank you again. Next item up is the Pulse Falls Urban Renewal Agency Annual Report, Diane Fountain.
Thank you. Let me get this set up here. Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. Diane Fountain, Executive Director for the Pulse Falls Urban Renewal Agency, and I am here tonight to present to you the 2018 Annual Report. Idaho Code 5020 requires that this report be presented by March 31st each year. The agency was created in 1991, and our offices are located upstairs in the Chamber Building. 2018 officers were Jerry Baltzell, Larry Carstensen, and Len Crosby. And most of the agency's activities fall under the following committees: Finance and Policy, District Review, and Communication, Property and Personnel, which meet as necessary. Our workshops are held on an as-needed basis. Our mission statement is to encourage sound economic and community improvement that enhances the overall quality of life in Pulse Falls by providing and improving infrastructure, attracting jobs, and enhancing citizen safety and health. This is a map slide of our urban renewal districts. Let's see if I can get this mouse to work right. In the Center Point Expo, West Seltice, Tullamore, and the newly formed Pulse Falls Technology District, they all have proponent developers who build public infrastructure and pay for it upfront. The risk lies solely on them to bring in new businesses, which result in increased property values and tax increment. Increment collected by the county is remitted to the agency on a monthly basis, and the agency reimburses the proponent twice a year, in February and in August, with the increment received. The City Center District closed in August of last year, and the increment being collected in East Pulse Falls, South and Central Districts will fund sewer improvements as well as repay the Greensbury Overpass Loan, which at December 31st was slightly over $4 million. So we had exciting things happening in 2018. First of all, we closed the City Center District in August. It was the third urban renewal district in Pulse Falls to close. With the closure, the agency rebated surplus increment of $448,000 back to the taxing districts. So this slide shows the amounts that were rebated back to the taxing entities. And with that closure, $21.9 million in new development value was available for each taxing district to include in their fiscal 2019 budget. This slide shows the amounts of dollars that the entities were able to take. So, City of Pulse Falls, it allowed you to take $115,000 on your budget in fiscal year Then we opened a new district, the Pulse Falls Technology District. It's the first district to open since 2005. The main focus of the district is a 335-acre technology park and a 50-acre regional shopping center. The agency's plan for this district was reviewed by the Pulse Falls Planning Commission and various taxing entities over the course of 16 months. It was approved by City Council on October 16th. This is a rendering of what the Pulse Falls Technology District could look like. The projected costs for the technology park alone are $656 million. The public infrastructure, which could be funded through urban renewal, totals $40.2 million. The number of jobs created will be determined on actual industry demand, but it is estimated that there will be 5,000 to 10,000 jobs over its lifespan. And it will add $855 million assessed value to the city of Pulse Falls. The district has a maximum life of 20 years. Our district overview is the increment that we received in 2018 and the remaining obligation at December 31st. The City Center, we received $417,000, and that district is now closed. In West Seltice, we received $259,000, the remaining obligation is $571,000. The Expo District, we received $292,000, and the remaining obligation is $832,000. Center Point, we received $866,000, and the remaining obligation is $1.5 million. East Pulse Falls, South and Central, we received just over $2 million. The remaining obligation at 1231 is the balance of the Greensbury Overpass Loan of just over $4 million. The Tullamore District, we received $632,000, the remaining obligation $3.6 million. Tullamore Commons 2, we received $27,000, and the remaining obligation is $218,000. Pulse Falls Technology District, since it just opened in October, we don't have any information on that yet. But as you can see from this slide, all of our districts, except for the Pulse Falls Technology District, will all close within the next three years. This slide shows a three-year comparison of tax increment received by district. The increment in 2018 decreased about 11.4% from the previous year, and this is mostly due to the increment in City Center only being collected through July, and the timing of the payments in the East Pulse Falls, South and Central District from the prior Once a proponent completes public improvement, they are dedicated to the city. Eligible construction costs are approved by the agency and added to their obligation. In March, $2 million was approved in the Tullamore District. And costs were approved for creative way in the Expo District for $605,000. In July, $497,000 was approved for the Center Point lift station improvements. And in October, our commission approved $1.3 million for the Expo District for Jaclyn Road and Expo Parkway. So these orders of approval added just over $4.5 million to the proponent obligations in 2018. Our financial highlights are based on our agency's annual audit. Increment revenue increased due to new development in our districts. Our interest revenues were much higher due to increased interest rates and the agency's strategically placing funds into CDs. Our cash increased, as there were no major projects being funded by the agency in 2018. And our loan liabilities decreased $1.7 million, as the agency continues to aggressively pay down the loan at the Washington Trust Bank, and it requires a 10% loan reserve. The reserve balance is reviewed on an annual basis, and as a result, the agency was able to apply $174,000 to the principal of that loan. Our proponent obligations increased as public improvements were completed, and our actual operating cost came in $43,000 less than budgeted. 2018 projects, the agency reimbursed $77,000 for work done on the Fourth Avenue parking lot, which was partially completed prior to the close of that district. This is a picture of when it was just a bare field. The city started doing their dirt work last summer. Light poles were installed in December. And curb sidewalk paving and landscaping will be completed by the city as weather permits, and that will complete this project. We also, Jaclyn Road and Expo Parkway in the Expo District are completed in July. This is a rendering of Jaclyn Road when construction first started, and then when it was completed. And Expo Parkway, see the dirt out there? Construction has been completed, and you can see the houses out there now. So this year, I did some slides on future projections on districts as they close. All of these figures are based on current levy rates and valuations. So West Seltice will close in 2020. The new development is over $26 million that will go back onto the taxing rolls. And that is a total of $295,000 increment that will go back to the taxing entities. Then in 2021, the Expo District will close. The new development that will go back onto the tax rolls is $29 million. Again, these are based on today's figures, so they could be much higher than that. The total increment going back to the taxing entities is $331,000. And in 2022, we will close the Center Point and East Pulse Falls districts, and the new development for those is over $330 million, which totals $3.7 million at today's rates that will go back to the taxing entities. This recap shows the closure dates, the new development roll, and the increment. So as you can see, as urban renewal has completed our job, a huge amount of new development tax increment will be returned to the taxing entities and the taxpayers, not only the year the district closes, but in every year in the future. This is a huge benefit to each of the taxing entities and each and every taxpayer, a total of $4.4 million over the next three years. Urban renewal and tax increment financing are the most significant tools available for attracting businesses and economic development, promoting job creation and encouraging development of blighted and underutilized areas. Again, the agency closed its third urban renewal district, the City Center District, and a surplus rebate of $448,000 was returned to the taxing entities. The closure resulted in $21.9 million in annual new development tax increment that will be collected by the various taxing entities, including the city of Pulse Falls. The Pulse Falls Technology Plan was adopted in October with a 20-year life, and Mayor and Council appointed Eric Clemmison to serve on the Urban Renewal Commission through December of 2023, and Jerry Baltzell and Len Crosby were reappointed to serve additional five-year terms. On behalf of the commission, I would like to thank the Mayor and City Council for your willingness to work in partnership with the commission to consider the feasibility of new urban renewal districts as our current districts come to a close.
Thank you, Diane. I want to share a comment. I sit on the Association of Idaho City Board, and every Friday, we have a legislative conference call. And there's probably 15 or 20 people on this conference call from around the state. And every year, it appears or seems like there's legislation to change, eliminate, restrict urban renewal. I can't remember quite what the status of, I was out of town, didn't make the last meeting. Another mayor made the comment to me that there was, they felt that if the legislation was tweaked in just a few spots, that it would be all right for urban renewal. And he says, but then I also have to remember that you don't worry about that in Pulse Falls, because if it's done right in urban renewal, it's because it's Pulse Falls doing it. So I've heard that numerous times, and to hear it at the state level, I think speaks volumes for yourself and the folks that oversee urban renewals. I really appreciate your efforts. I think the success of what has been done, yeah, it hurts in the short term while you forego those taxes, but you create the additional capital investment in the community, and you generate a larger tax base, and that will help us as we plan for the future and help keep the city financially viable. So thanks to you, again, and to the entire board. I know, I saw Eric here for, there he is, for taking the time to serve on that commission. Are there any questions of Diane?
No. Great job.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your continued support.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Are there any amendments to the agenda tonight?
We have none tonight, sir.
Are there any declarations of conflict? With that, would you please present the consent calendar?
Item A is minutes from the March 5th, 2019 City Council Meeting. Item B is payables February 26th through March 11th, 2019. Item C is request by the Police Department to dispose of a vehicle. Item D is request by the Street Department to dispose of a vehicle. Item E is adoption of the 2019 Updated Standard Drawings Details and Notes. That's from the Engineering Department. Item F is easement for the Riverfront Esplanade from BTTA. And Item G is request from the IT Department to dispose of various computer equipment. And again, that equipment has been stripped down.
Are there any questions on the consent calendar?
Move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion?
Just like to make a comment. It doesn't state in what Shelley just said, but the police car that's being disposed of is 15 years old, and it's got 209,000 miles on it. The pickup from the Street Department is 19 years old, and it's got 224,000 miles on it. I'd say you guys got the most out of those, so congratulations and thank you for keeping an eye on those dollars.
Especially the police car, where they spend a lot of time idling.
Oh, I know. Crazy. Nice job.
I would share that.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is public hearings. Tonight, we do have two. The first is Bogey Drive Vacation. And with that, I will open the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor Jacobson, Council President Wilhelm, Council Members. My name is Jamie Hayes. I'm Planner 1 of the Community Development Department, and I am here to present the Bogey Drive Right-of-Way and Easyment Vacation. The case file is VACA-2-2019. The owner and applicant are both the city of Pulse Falls. The requested action here is to review and approve the requested vacation for a portion of East Bogey Drive and easement vacation within the Wheelbarrow Estates subdivision. The proposed vacation is located west of North Cecil Road and west of the Tullamore subdivision. As you can see, in the red is the proposed right-of-way and easement to be vacated. Get the mouse to work there. Running east and west is Bogey Drive, and north and south is Cecil. And then you can see to the east of Cecil is the Tullamore subdivision. Here is a close-up of what that vacation looks like. And the city staff does not have any issues regarding the proposed vacation request. The proposed vacation has been requested to accommodate the revised roadway alignment associated with the development of the Wheelbarrow Estates Platts. The vacation will not have any impact on utility services or existing or future lots. If the vacation is approved, the ordinance will exempt from the legal description the required platted portion of Calory Street. And here you can see, encapsulated in the red, is the portion of the right-of-way and easement that will be exempt. And you can see how Calory runs north and south there. These are all of the agencies routed. And Cootney County Fire and Rescue is neutral on the proposed vacation. Do you have any questions or comments regarding the right-of-way or easement vacation?
See none. Thank you very much. Is there anyone, I were the applicant, so I guess.
We have none.
And no other comments?
No.
With that, I will, thanks, Jamie, I will close the public hearing. Council, it's in your hands.
I'd move to approve file number VACA-0002-2019, the Bogey Drive Vacation.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Borders?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Jamie. Next item up is the Zone Change Selkirk. With that, I will open the public hearing.
Once again, I will be presenting the Selkirk Zone Change. I am Jamie Hayes with Planner 1 with the Community Development Department. Selkirk Case File RZNE-8-2018. The owner is Selkirk Construction. The applicant is Scott Haug. The requested action is for City Council, that City Council is being asked to review the zone change request of approximately 0.2 acres and to make a decision of approval of the proposed high-density multifamily R3 zoning. Hatched in red is the proposed project location. It is fronting West 10th Street, which is a local street. And then you have higher road classifications running north, which would be Spokane Street, and then the higher road classifications running west and east are Mullen and then Once again, the property size is approximately 0.28 acres. The current land use is residential. The physical characteristics of the proposed project is residential with no significant topology or vegetation issues. Water and sewer are both provided by the city of Pulse Falls. Wanted to show the CityLink bus route running north and south on Spokane Street. This little green dot here is the bus route pickup, right next to the proposed project. Other amenities for a higher-density zone change for this would be that there's the public library right here, the Boys and Girls Club right here, and across the street from the Boys and Girls Club is an elementary school. And then actually behind this vicinity map is also another elementary school. There are six criteria that are involved with the zone change. The first three are amendments to the zoning map should be in accordance with the Comprehensive Plan's future land use map. Amendments to the zoning map should be in accordance with the goals and policies found in the Pulse Falls Comprehensive Plan. And zoning is assigned following consideration of such items, such as street classification, traffic patterns, existing development, future land uses, community plans, and geographic or natural features. The overall emphasis is to encourage a balance of land uses to help Pulse Falls remain a desirable, stable, and sustainable community. This is a future land use map. As you can see, the proposed project site is residential. All the yellow is residential. The red is commercial. And then the green is public reserve institutional. The proposed project site is in the pink, which is limited commercial. To the south of this is, in red, is commercial. To the north of it is commercial. What is in light yellow is single-family residential. The mustard-colored right here is R2 zoning, just slightly higher in density. And then the orange, to the northwest and then to the southeast, is higher-density R3 zoning. The final three elements of the zone change is that commercial and high-density residential zoning is typically assigned along streets with a higher road classification. Limited or neighborhood commercial and lower-density residential zoning is typically assigned for properties as they proceed farther away from the higher-intensity urban activity to ensure that adequate land is available for future housing needs. And that industrial zoning is typically assigned for properties with sufficient access to major transportation routes and may be situated away from residential zoning. These are all the agencies routed. Cootney County Fire and Rescue and the Pulse Falls Police Department both remain neutral on the project. Are there any questions or comments?
Questions with Jamie on this? Thank you. Does the applicant wish to present? And just in case you've forgotten, name for the record, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Scott Haug. Thank you for the opportunity. It's been a while since I've been in front of you. I just want to make, we agree with, obviously, with staff's report. We just want to make four sort of follow-up points. Number one, our request meets all six of the approval criteria. Number two, it's consistent with the future zone map. And at the Planning and Zoning Commission, there was nobody that spoke in opposition to this. And then finally, it's consistent with the comp plan. And so we think this project is a positive thing for Pulse Falls. If you've been in that area before, there is some need for some improvement in that area, and so we feel like this project that we have proposed will improve that area. So with that, I would stand for any questions.
Any questions, Scott?
Can't think of any.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone wishing to testify?
We have one.
Wishing to speak in opposition, Bob Flowers.
Bob Flowers, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Well, here it comes again, spring. CCS property, not residential, is being transformed into high-density multifamily housing. Now, I'm not sure what they can put on 0.28 acres, maybe a fourplex, I'm not sure exactly what they plan on putting there. But I was asked today by a gentleman, why do we even bother having zoning anymore? Could I even remember the last time a zoning change was denied? And to be honest, I couldn't, because at least one that hadn't been appealed and approved then at that point. I just, more multifamily housing, more multifamily housing. And I'm sure this is the first, only the first CCS piece of property that's going to come in front of the council this spring to be changed to multifamily, high-density housing. I just believe that it's time to kind of stop and really take a look at what we want here. Do we want a city of apartments? Or do we want homes and families? That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Flowers. Any rebuttal? With that, I will close the public hearing. Counsel, how would you like that?
I would move to approve file number RZNE-0008-2018, the Selkirk Zone Change.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion?
For me, given the size of the plot, about a quarter acre, I was trying to think of anything that would go in there under commercial statutes that would have less in-and-out traffic than that, and I couldn't think of anything. So in terms of, the biggest impact of multifamily, obviously, is on the infrastructure, the traffic, and so forth. So really, if anything's going to go in under any zone, either the current or a new R3, that's probably going to have the least impact, so I'm in support of it.
And I would share your comment. I would share Mr. Flowers' comment. We see tremendous requests of multifamily coming in. I saw a summary of one contractor working on over 400 units that are currently being built in the city, but I'm going to agree with you. You've got a very small lot. You're not going to put 40 units in. You're going to put something that meets the area, meets the lot size. It's not going to be a mega project, and I would agree. I don't know what you could put in there on a commercial project to make it feasible. So the residential in that case, in this case, to me, makes sense.
Sorry, you had a comment?
I'd like to mention that sometimes we do want families here in Post Falls. Sometimes families live in apartments and duplexes and fourplexes, and especially in that area where you have schools, the boys and girls, you have all those services there. I think that's a great place, and I wouldn't, I don't like to make a distinction on families who live in Post Falls by whether they live in a single-family home or an apartment or duplex, so.
Yeah, I'll give some.
Only the, just to follow up with the comment that Mr. Flowers made, do we, do we want a city full of multifamily? We did an assessment last year. It's not like we just randomly just approved things. We're not a rubber stamp here with yes on it. We did look at it. We did ask staff to come back and tell us what the mix was in our community, and found out that there still is a need for multifamily, and so I understand where he's coming from, and I'm not going to say that we're not going to prudently look at every deal that comes before us, but I agree with Councilman Malloy. I looked at the same thing and said, what else could we put in this limited commercial zone that would be a better fit than whatever multifamily they're going to be able to build there? I couldn't come up with anything either, so.
And no matter what we put in there, limited commercial would create more traffic than a fourplex, so.
Exactly, yeah.
Any comments?
You know, it's more than reasonable for that location. I drive by there regularly as I attend church down the street there, and I think it's a good fit for that area.
With that, I would entertain a motion.
Oh, we have one. I'm sorry. We had motion and a second?
Yep.
Yeah, roll call, please.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next item up is unfinished business. Tonight we have none, followed by citizens' issues. And this section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the council regarding a city-related issue that is not on the agenda. If anyone wishes to address council, please come forward and state your name for the record. Seeing none. We go down to new business, Black Stallion Ranch Annexation Agreement. Mr. Manley, you are going to work tonight. I say that in jest because you present probably 85% of the items at council, so.
Thankfully, Jamie does a really good job and can relieve on some of these presentations, so. It's that. So this is an interesting proposal here. I've been here about 12 years. Firstly off, John Manley, Planning Manager here with the City Post Falls, presenting this, this item. But yeah, I've never had an annexation agreement amendment before me. We've done, I've done PUDs, subdivisions, zone changes, so this is a bit interesting. So in 2007, there was an annexation that was proposed, and a part of the agreement was that this Black Stallion Ranch, or Zaron Annexation, was capped within the agreement to do two dwelling units per acre. So the applicant, being the fact that it's zoned R1, presumed as much that it was R1, and that they would have the typical R1 development rights that would under, that go along with it. So they're asking that since it's zoned R1, can they develop this lot as R1? You also may ask, why isn't it a public hearing? Part of the reason why it's not a public hearing in this is because it was not a condition, in the conditions of annexation, it was more embodied in the body of the agreement. So it's more of an agreement situation than a condition of approval, which would otherwise be noticed as part of an amendment to the annexation. So getting into the specifics of it, you have right here where it talks about development density. This is within that document that was in your staff report. You see it highlighted here in the dark bolded area where it states, where the zoning designation, and then that density limitations. Here's the proposed, yep, go ahead.
Let's real quick on the previous slide. Is it bold in the actual agreement that was signed by both parties, or is this, is it bolded on this slide just for emphasis?
No, it was bold. This is a copy and paste, snipping from the document. Looking here, this is what the applicant language that they would prefer, being the fact that it's R1, is that the property will be zoned R1 in a density of five dwelling units per acre, which is typical R1 property. So what is the existing conditions? So here's where you see the zoning in the area, and you see it kind of really mixed up pretty good. You see to the, this property, which is just north of Poline, Chase Road here doesn't get captured, but it's to the east. But you see here, you have R1S, which is that light yellow, just across the rail corridor. Most of those are one-acre lots or close to one acre. There is just areas where they're less, closer to half acre, which I'll go into the acreage in just a couple slides. You have R1 on the north also of the railroad corridor. Directly to the east, you have R1S properties, but those aren't one-acre lots. They're like half-acre lots. And then a little bit further, you got a mix of some other R1, SC3, some SC4, and then to the south mostly is Montrose and other single-family subdivisions. Here's an aerial image that shows that rail corridor that runs from the southwest to the northeast. You can see those larger lots, and you can kind of see those higher-density nearby to the southeast. So this is definitely an area in transition. How it transitions, you know, some of that's going to be decided a little bit today on this case. What I did here, and the numbers don't show up real good, is I tried to, I referred to it a little bit in the staff report, and I wanted to be a little more accurate on what the acreage is around this. So you can see here, I'm going to move the map around a little bit, that directly to the east of this site, you do see the half-acre lots. You do see some that are a little over a third acre. Up on this area of Black Stallion, along Chase Road, you do see a mix of these 0.4, 0.2, 0.3, quarter-acre lots, which is like your R1 properties. And then to the south of Poline and Montrose, there's also a mix of these 0.15, you know, some smaller lots, part of Montrose, part of a PUD. Then here's where you see the R1S properties that was depicted before with those larger one-acre lots with transitioning over to Chase to some higher densities. So in the staff report, you did see that the planning staff doesn't see this as incompatible, that the proposal to go to R1 would be compatible specifically since it's south of the rail corridor. All the homes are considered single-family homes of, on various lots. Admittedly, staff also acknowledges that it was annexed with that two dwelling units per acre as part of the annexation agreement, but it wouldn't necessarily be incompatible. So we get to come before you tonight, staff, just to present the facts, and in the applicant's interest as part of new business to find your druthers going forward regarding the situation, which is unique, and how you'd want to proceed. If you chose that you'd recommend approval of this change, we would come back the first part of next month and bring back an agreement, addendum to the annexation agreement. So that's how we'd proceed depending on your, if it's a denial, then that's that.
Who'd like to start? Go ahead.
John, I can't remember for sure if I was on Planning and Zoning when we approved this. That's about when I started, but were you able to look back through the notes and come up with any reason why that was, statement was included in that? Because I certainly can't recall proving something with that stipulation, if you will.
Well, the concern back then, I mean, most, a lot of this was undeveloped in 2007. So you're looking at big fields of ground, you know, northern plains to the east was not really that developed that much. I know most of this wasn't developed, so you're looking at a big vast field of, field at this point in time. 10 years later, now we see development in Montrose, and, well, I think this section of Montrose was, may or may not have been developed. So I believe the perception was to preserve and have that half-acre character in the area and at that time.
The discussion on that, I remember when it was the council, you had the Meadows, which was acre minimum, and it was kind of a transition period, and a lot of the folks, I don't know if it was on this particular piece of property, but a lot of the folks out in that area wanted to see that one-acre minimum continue, and it was a compromise that was reached. It was, we will go with the R1 zoning, however, it did have the two homes per acre density limit, and that was, I think at the time, council's actions in order to try to keep the, some larger lots out there.
Got you. Joe?
First, I always get a little bit concerned when an agreement was made and developer goes into it, eyes wide open, bold print, this is what we're getting into, and then tries to change the rules for, I'm assuming higher density means more money, more profit. Looking at the nature of that area, there was another, I believe it's the whole Genesek Loop and Court area, if I'm correct, that was originally, we rejected as an R1, went to an R1S, and the compromise, which I personally voted against, was to have the larger lots on the outside, so it, and the R1S offsets, so it had minimized impact on the surrounding larger lots. So that's why you see the quarter-acre lots buried in the middle with the third to half-acre lots on the outside. The subject property in question is completely, you know, shares one entire border with half-acre lots. It's not big enough to be able to do the same kind of compromise, to have the same offsets, larger lots, so as not to affect their property. So it's going to have a very big effect on that Ashraf Court, Miss Hannah Avenue development, and you look at one-acre lots just across the railroad corridor. So if you're, if you look at the nature of that area, it's not for five units per acre, and the original agreement wasn't for five units per acre, so I'm not in support of this at all.
Excuse me, John. Well, I, I was a little confused with the whole thing because the way I'm looking at this, number one, and maybe legal could help with this, there's two separate file numbers here. It was very confusing. I do remember what Councilor Malloy is talking about when that was, that was a pretty huge public hearing over those bordering lots across from the Meadows there. So even, even if somebody went to approve this, which one of these file numbers are correct? And I'm just really confused by the whole package.
Yeah, I can't speak to the file numbers. I, that's, I don't know the answer to that. This is a bit of an interesting presentation. It's unusual for us to have a request to amend an annexation agreement, and it's frankly even more unusual to have this type of density limitation in an annexation, excuse me, annexation agreement. We don't typically see that. So it is unusual all the way around. I think John can probably speak to the, to the Genesek Loop hearing. Was that two years ago, I believe, and there was a compromise on a PUD about moving some density and changing some lot sizes. The, the subject property was long before my time, so I'm really not much help on the history. I would say it's unusual to have this type of a restriction in an annexation agreement. I was a little bit surprised when John brought it to me that we have an agreement that looks like this. I wouldn't have anticipated seeing that, especially when it wasn't reflected in the approval conditions for the development of the property. So that's about all the light I can shed on this for you. If you have a specific question, I can try again, but I don't, I don't have a lot of history with this.
And the, the agreement, I believe, is A-06-07, named Zaron Estates.
Again, I think back at the time, because it's been many years, the annexation of R1, R1, or the zoning of R1 was not going to go forward, and then R1S, wasn't sure if that was going to go forward. And I think the R1 with the density limitation was, in fact, the compromise to allow it to move forward.
Yeah, my understanding, and maybe this gets to your, your question, Councilor Wilhelm, is the original developer, I believe, has sold this and has renamed, a new purchaser has come in and they changed the name, and so it's, the original annexation agreement was Zaron, I believe, is the name, and it's now Black Stallion, but it's the same property, same, same development, different developer.
Now, do you have any comments?
Question, I guess. Looking at the Black Stallion piece right next to it, and then how narrow the piece, the subject property is, how would they ever develop it into smaller pieces? Looks like if you tried to put a road through there, you'd use up all the land that's available.
I can presume that's why we're here. You, you have the R1, and I know in conversations, they do, would like to run a subdivision and PUD concurrent on this piece if this was to get modified. So that would allow some flexibility maybe in the road standards and, and some lot dimensions.
Guess I kind of leaned toward with Councilman Malloy, it was an agreement.
Mr. Borders?
I just think it's too narrow to, to go much smaller. I guess I have to go along with the original agreement, that two, two houses per acre is plenty for that development, and I think it fits into that better on both sides of the tracks and with existing subdivisions. So I would, did I go in anything higher than that at this point?
With five counselors present tonight, I'm not going to get a chance to vote, but, which doesn't surprise me. I haven't voted in five and a half years. But if it did come down to me, I would agree. I remember the discussion, the negotiation that came forth with annexing this in and the zoning. The developers, I've seen their projects, they do, the proponents, they do a very nice job. However, it is R1S, R1 with the density limit that was in the agreement. It was a compromise that was reached. My concern is if we do this, go back to something Mr. Flowers said before, you know, you get a zoning with density and you keep changing, and I understand times change, but I think we're opening a can of worms if we would change this. And like I say, I'm not going to get a chance to vote, but I would if it came to me as a tiebreaker vote against the change, but I just wanted to get my thoughts out there. With that, I would entertain a motion if there's no further comments.
Move to deny the Black Stallion Ranch Annexation Agreement Amendment.
Second. Motion second. Further discussion. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Next item up are ordinances and resolutions, and we have four ordinances tonight. The first is the Early Dawn Right-of-Way Vacation.
Move to place the ordinance, Early Dawn Right-of-Way Vacation, file number VACA-0001-2019, on its first and only reading by, while under suspension of the rules.
Second. Motion second. Further discussion. Roll call, please. Roll call, please.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
An ordinance of the city of Post Falls, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, providing for the vacation of rights-of-way situated in the southeast quarter of Section 25, Township 51 North, Range 5 West, Boise Meridian, as described herein, providing for disposition of the vacated right-of-way, providing repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing separability, providing an effective date, and providing for other matters properly relating thereto.
Move to approve the ordinance, VACA-0001-2019, to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and let it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes. Mr. Wilson?
An ordinance of the city of Post Falls, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, providing for the vacation of rights-of-way situated in the southwest quarter of Section 32, Township 51 North, Range 5 West, Boise Meridian, as described herein, providing for disposition of the vacated right-of-way, providing repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing separability, providing an effective date, and providing for other matters properly relating here, thereto.
Move to approve the ordinance, Echo Drive Vacation, file number VACA-0003-2018, to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and let it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item up is the ordinance fiscal year 2019 budget amendment.
Move to place the ordinance, fiscal year 2019 budget amendment, number one, on its first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second, discussion. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes. Mr. Wilson?
An ordinance of the city of Post Falls, Idaho, amending the annual appropriation ordinance 1346 for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2018, to reflect the receipt of unscheduled revenues and to authorize expenditure previously unbudgeted fund balance, increasing and establishing the appropriations for expenditures in various departments and funds, providing that the tax levy upon the taxable property within the city is not affected hereby, providing that all ordinances in conflict herewith are superseded by this ordinance to the extent of such conflict, and providing that the ordinance shall be effective upon its publication date.
Move to approve the ordinance, fiscal 2019 budget amendment number one, and to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and let it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion seconds, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Motion passes. And the final is the pre-treatment ordinance update.
Move to place the ordinance, pre-treatment ordinance update, on its first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second, discussion. Roll call, please.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes.
An ordinance of the city of Post Falls, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, repealing Title 13, Chapter 20 of the Post Falls City Code, adopting a new Title 13, Chapter 20, establishing wastewater pre-treatment standards and providing for administration, definitions and abbreviations, establishing prohibited discharge standards and compliance and discharge permit requirements, authorizing transfer and notification of discharge permits, establishing reporting and compliance monitoring requirements, providing enforcement procedures, including a civil assessment of $1,000, providing that a violation is a misdemeanor punishable by a fine not to exceed $1,000, six months in jail or both, providing an appeal process, providing separability, providing repeal of conflicting ordinances, and providing an effective date.
Move to approve the ordinance, pre-treatment ordinance update, to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and let it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Borders?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next up, administrator staff reports.
The only thing I'll mention is that our workshops are booked all the way through September, and so the first meeting of the month, when we typically don't have a workshop, we're likely going to have a few workshops between now and September. And I know April 1st, it's actually April 2nd, the first meeting in April, we are planning to have a workshop with council and kick off our, show you what we're doing with our long-range financial planning committee. So I just want to make you aware that the first meeting, we may have some workshops. I know Joe, I know. Joe has a specially scheduled for that, so we just wanted to kind of let you know that.
Appreciate that, Al.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Mayor comments tonight? The only thing I can say is thank goodness for sunshine and, and not having to use our snowplows. Give those guys a break, so appreciate the efforts. Matter of fact, at an event the other night, and I had a gentleman come up to me and say, I've got to tell you a story, and he's got a relative that worked for another city, and he said he was out in Post Falls and driving the roads. And he said, I had to go home and I called up my relative and told the relative, I don't know what you guys are doing, but you ought to see Post Falls streets, they're, they're in good shape. And I, I hear that, but I also hear the contrary. So I appreciate the positive comments, and it was, it was nice to hear. So again, thanks to staff for doing a great job in that. Council comments?
Al? I just got one thing. As I was going through all the paid bills, I noticed that the recreation department employs a lot of high school athletes as referees, and I think that's just a great program to get these kids, not only give them something to do, but as an athlete to learn the other side of it, and what, how hard it is to be a referee is, is a great thing. I know Dave's not here, but I wanted to give him a pat on the back for hiring those young, young people to do a good job for other young people.
Thank you. Carrie?
I'm going to ask the assistance of Chief Knight for this one. Over the weekend, in Montrose, I live in Pioneer Ridge, but in Montrose, evidently there was someone shooting starlings in their backyard and...
You got that email, too?
Yeah.
I didn't get that email.
The discussion that took place was about the value of starlings in nature. But the point, and I just wanted the chief to clarify it, is that it is by ordinance illegal to discharge a firearm, no matter what your target, in the city of Post Falls. So if you would like to officially...
Yes, well, good evening, Mayor, Council, and Council Malloy, thank, or Council Thorson, thanks for the question. It is against the law to discharge any firearm or any other manually operated throwing device inside the city limits. My guess is you're sitting there asking, what next, a manually operated throwing device, and what's the definition? So I have a quick definition for you, and that covers bow and arrows, slingshots, and any other instrument used to propel any object by mechanical or manually operated means. And that also covers airsoft guns or air guns and BB guns, so.
And I forgot to clarify, it was a BB gun that they were shooting, so they didn't have like a AK-47 or something. It was a BB gun that they were trying to take out the starlings.
You are correct. And we do get those questions often, so.
Yeah, so in our audience of millions tonight, we can spread the word that no matter if it's a BB gun or the, like you say, the airsoft, no matter what it is, when you live in a residential area, you, you can never be sure that you're going to hit what you're aiming at.
That's correct. You've got to be cautious of your target and what's beyond it.
Be good neighbors, not during season. Something other than starlings.
In the woods, yeah, in the woods, not in the city.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Chief. No other comments? We do not need an executive session tonight?
We do not.
So with that, the next motion is adjourned. All those in favor?
Aye.
You need to adjourn.